It's six o'clock. And so we're going to do our student and staff presentations first. And then hopefully the board will have convened enough members to open and conduct business. So principals and designated, Ms. Andrews, are all your students here? So good evening and welcome to the May presentation of our student and staff members of the month. Before we do that, I would like to recognize that our principals last week with someone's support from the building, recognized teacher appreciation, the staff appreciation last week. So if we could give the building leaders a round of applause for planning and executing, recognition for the hard work that the staff does on the other basis. So thank you to our building leaders for an outstanding job. So we'll start today with Ms. Andrews, who will be here representing Third Good Marshall. They do have their students.
Good evening. I have to get up. Parking is crazy. So just want to say good evening, everybody. Sacase.
Sacase.
Celebrating Haitian Heritage, Haitian Flag Day. Today, I wanted to celebrate one of our star kindergarten students. He is always very helpful, and this is what I'm getting from my, from his teacher, always very helpful, a great, just a great friend to his colleagues in his classroom. I believe he received a hundred percent on his Lincoln Math or ELA. So definitely one of our star students. I want to celebrate. Ms. Hamilton, this is teacher, where's Ms. Hamilton? Ms. Hamilton, come on in. She actually wanted to say a couple of quick words.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? But I've had the pleasure of having Caleb in my class this year. When I say Caleb is an absolutely amazing student, I've been saying Kevin, I'm sorry, Caleb. He is absolutely an amazing student. He's always willing to help out his classmates. He does his work. He works his hardest. When I say he is, he has come such a long way since September has started. He has persevered through so much that's happening in the classroom that's outside. He has become well spoken. He speaks to his classmates in a great way. He speaks to his colleagues and his teacher colleagues. He speaks to his teachers.
That's us.
Yes, he speaks to his teacher. He's showing so many different leadership qualities that are absolutely amazing as a kindergartner. So Caleb, I continue to praise you and to remember that you need to be a good student. Thank you, practice. I'm very proud of you. Mom. Excellent job, mom. Come on up, mom. Mom needs it for you. Can you come on up, please? Grandma, I want to know because you guys are doing an amazing job. This young man right here.
And we have a big backpack with a bunch of goodies for Caleb.
And actually, I picked this lady to be my grandson. Thank you.
Also, Ms. Andrews will do the staff member of the month for Third Good Marshall.
So our staff member of the month is a kindergarten teacher. She is a special ed kindergarten teacher, which says a lot. She is such a great role model for her colleagues. She, it's Ms. Danielle Vanessa.
You stand there for Dr. Schultz. Next, we have Ms. Jackson Byers standing. We'll have Bradley Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone, and happy Haitian Flag Day, everyone. Yes, I am Haitian by association. That's me. That's what I do. Tonight is an honor and privilege. I guess we are on the kindergarten tip because we have, our star student for the month is also a kindergarten student, and his name is Terrance. Guys, let's give him a round of applause as he comes. His teacher is here, and she has some words for him. And yes, he is sharp. Come on up, man. That's the next, that's the next president. And Terrance, please come up. Mom and dad, please come up. And we have both teachers here.
Hi, Ms. Johnson. This is Conforti. We have Terrance in our class, and he is a superstar. He got a hundred on his Lincoln ELA and his math. He is a terrific writer. He writes these super sentences, and he's a great drawer. He loves math, and we have such a pleasure having him in class, and we're so proud of you. Good job, Terrance.
Terrance, so Terrance, we have some spirit wear for you. So on your dress now, this is for you. And, and mom and dad, you are our biggest fans, our biggest supporters. We have some spirit wear for you for mom and dad. And listen, mom, we have one for the little baby inside, too. We have like a onesie for you. And here are some flowers for you, and Happy Belated Mother's Day. Thank you for everything that you do. Unfortunately, my staff member of the month is not here. That's none other than Ms. Cynthia Artazone. She is the Bradley Elementary School. When I tell you she has worked her role as a special ed coach, and then now she came into as a teacher, she did it the whole entire year, and she is just a great asset. And so we appreciate her, but she just couldn't make it tonight. So all accepted in her. Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson Byers. Next, we'll have Mr. Perry Medina from the MLK Upper Elementary.
All right, my student from the Martin Luther King Upper Elementary is sixth grader Brendan Wazé. Come up. Come on up, Dad. So what's interesting about this young man right here is, and I'm particularly proud of him because he is not just a straight A, he's a straight A-plus student. He scores exceptionally high on his ELA and math Lincoln assessments, and he's also in our advanced classes for ELA and math. I do want to say for this young man right here, and for our teacher, who I will, will name in a second, it's particularly honorable to get this kind of award this late in the school year. When we are fighting through challenges and fighting through difficult times, Brandon has stuck, remained strong and has earned top honors in our school. So Brandon, I want to say thank you so much. Thank you for representing our school and our district so well. And Dad, thank you. And, no, that was it. And our staff member of the month who is not here today is our world language teacher, Ms. Isamar Correa. She's actually the world language teacher in two other schools, so she has the honor of having taught the majority of students in Ezra Park, so I do want to honor Ms. Correa with that honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Next, we'll have Ms. O'Neill, our high school principal, will do student presentations from those seven and eight and nine through twelve.
Okay, so we're starting with our high school student of the month. This individual is a member of our senior class. He is someone who embodies all of the values that we're looking for. Not only is he a near-perfect attendance student, he is a straight A and A-plus student this year as a 12th grader. He is heading off to Felician College next year, where he will be majoring in nursing. He also is the recipient of our NJSAA Sportsmanship Award. He is someone who embodies respect. He always has a presence within our building. His coaches sing his honors every single season. I heard so much about him from the time that I got here, and we recognized him last night as one of our senior members of the National Honor Society. Please give it up for John Laverick.
One more, one more. Okay.
She is an eighth grader, a rising ninth grader for us. She is someone that in our Dream Academy application process and interviews stood out as someone already so eloquently spoken. She is someone that started the school year with a couple of rough patches, but has overcome everything and really become a role model for her class. She's someone that I think as she rises to 11th and 12th grade is going to be one of our leaders in the high school. Her name is Mariah Wilson. She's an incredible student, so shout out to her. And then our staff member of the month, not splicing words, she has made my first year here at Asbury Park so much easier. It is a great feeling when you have someone who is catching your missteps and mistakes before you even know that they happen. She has been anticipating our needs. She's been trying to build community, not only with our students, but our families and also with our staff. She is one of the greatest hires that we've had as very school district in a while, and she's someone that will continue to serve us for years to come. She has the biggest heart, and she strives to just do better and better every day for the high school. She wants to see it be a great place. She is our new administrative assistant in the guidance office. It's Ms. Ajene Polis.
and staff member of the month. However, we're still waiting for another board member to actually have a quorum, so we'll take a brief recess until that time, and then the meeting will officially begin. To those families that students have recognized, you may enjoy your evening. Thank you.
Okay, so this is one of our eighth graders, Mariah Wilson. She's rising up to ninth grade next year. During our Dream Academy interview process and application, Mariah was so consistently impressive in how eloquent she was, how composed she was in her responses, especially about what she wants to do for our larger district and specifically for the high school. She's someone that has taken feedback from me and really grown this school year as an individual, sought to improve herself, sought to really become a role model in the community. I'm proud of her. I think by the time she's in 11th or 12th grade, she's going to be one of the leaders of the high school, so I'm really excited to recognize her tonight, Mariah Wilson.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to begin now. In the absence of the board president and the board vice president, the remaining members who represent a quorum of the board will select from themselves, one among themselves to preside over the meeting until such time as the board president arrives.
I'll make the motion that Ms. Lozinski act as coordinator of this meeting until our president arrives.
Seconded.
Did we ask for a rope?
Yes, this is for Ms. Lozinski to preside as president.
Anybody can call for rope?
Oh, he's got that, yeah. Thank you. This is for Ms. Lozinski to preside as president until the president or vice president arrives. Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo? Ms. Lozinski? Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders, Ms. Alsby, Ms. Cook. Motion carries.
It's seven, 6:45, 6:46, in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 104-6, PL 1975, C231 S1 amended 2006, C7 ES2. The Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press, the New Coaster on January 27, 2023. The email copies of this notice have also been placed at the administrative building, Bolton Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 27, 2023. The Asbury Park School District provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education, where everyone possesses the skills and the character to succeed in a diverse and involving global society. Mr. Hastings, rope.
Mr. Grillo, Ms. Lozinski, Dr. Penna?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Ms. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Saunders, Ms. Alsby, Ms. Cook.
Please stand for the flag salute. Ms. Rich, CNI committee report?
Thank you. I'll have a brief report. The CNI committee did meet last week, and we discussed moving the seventh and eighth graders back to the Martin Luther King School, and the elementary school will be from kindergarten through fifth grade. We also discussed Deborah Glove LLC to provide professional development sessions on building K through five problem solving. Each session will include a side deck which will link to resources for supervisors to share with their mathematic teachers. We discuss the Asbury Park Academic Bridge 45-day program. The program will serve sixth through 12th grade students who violate the Asbury Park Student Code of Conduct, disciplinary policies, and requires a change of setting beyond short-term periods of exclusion. The Academic Bridge 45-day program students will utilize our current academic support in New Jersey virtual school courses into age-grade appropriate classroom for 45-day That, the Asbury Park Academic Bridge program will operate as an alternative educational school program for students who need interim educational placement for a period of 45 days. The program will offer counseling, required academic curricula, transitional support with the goal of reintegration back into the district program. There is also another offering from the Community Affairs Resource Center for computer classes, computer literacy classes at the parent center for the community. That includes my report.
Thank you. You want to do policy? Sure, go ahead.
The policy committee was told about the changes recommended by Strauss Esme. They included changes to attendance and class trip regulations that will be made by the superintendent. Changes to the transgender policy will be made to align the district with state guidelines. The tuition assistance policy will remain intact, with recommendations for change postponed until negotiations begin on the APAA-CBA. And administration will update the acceptable use agreement with appropriate fees for lost or damaged devices. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. I'll do the athletics. We had our meeting, the athletic sports banquet is going to take place, if anybody is athlete, parent, guest, Wednesday, June 7th, from 5 to 8, and it's going to be in the high school gymnasium this year. Full sports signups are currently taking place, and the fall schedules will be scheduled for the first week in June. They're checking eligibility at the high school for the fall sports throughout the summer, so we'll be all set next year. Also, information for charter schools who don't have the athletic sports at their schools will be able to sign up also with our school. Scholar Athlete of the Year will be presented, and there also, Mr. Bowers and Ms. Fontaine participated in the MS walk that was held. We'll guess May 7th, and that was it for athletics. You want to do a B and G, Mr. Hastings? And I'll do finance?
B and G committee met on Monday, May 15th. On the agenda is a request from the Asbury Park Technical Academy of Dance to use the high school for rehearsal and a recital on June 10th and 11th. They're asking for a fee waiver of $1,625. The committee also reviewed overtime costs incurred through various events, and we'll look at those numbers in the future to see if any changes to the regulation need to be made. The committee reviewed some district bids that were being opened. We received bids for the media center renovation, which again came in over budget. We received bids for substitute staffing services, which are under review by the attorney, and we received bids for food service management companies for the school year 2024. Committee also reviewed appraisals that were received on the district maintenance shop and the Barack Obama School. They were updated on various projects, including a safety grant that's being applied for that goes through the district insurance carrier. Anticipated amount is approximately $7,000. And we're also reviewing playground equipment at Third Good Marshall and getting quotes lined up to replace the equipment and the surfacing of the surrounding areas. And the committee also discussed, because we had some finance members there as well, the district experience factor with our health care provider. There were some questions about options for the district to move to maybe a less expensive premium, but in reviewing those and in discussing with the broker, the experience over the past two years has not been good enough for us to look to move to another provider.
Thank you. And the last is the finance committee. We discussed the 2324 budget and all the monies that are allocated already for the ESSER funds so that projects were doing, and some timelines with contractors. And you mentioned the bids, and we also have the appraisals for Barack Obama and the maintenance building, and we discussed that. Also, in BG, we discussed that also, or the bids, the appraisals that came in for Barack Obama and the land?
Yes, so those were received and discussed with both committees. The committees discussed various options available.
Thank you. Anything else on the agenda that anybody wanted to discuss or have questions on before we move on?
Yeah, with the curriculum committee's report, the 45-day new program, what type of data did we get to establish that we, that this would be functional? What are the administrative costs? What are the teacher costs? What are the ups, the downs? Anything that goes into deciding this program?
Normally with a 45-day program, that's connected to our disciplinary matrix where we send students out. That is an excessive cost with cruise transportation, where we send students to places like MOAS or Coastal or other places for students that have violated the district code of conduct to an excessive point beyond suspension. So when we look at how much money we've expended over the last several years, we've expended well over, I would say, $350,000 in sending students to out-of-district placement for 45 calendar days. So the need that in itself says that we need to look at providing those internal programs ourselves, the cost and the impact of those students who also exceed absenteeism and not attending those programs as well is another issue. We also have seen issues of students transitioning back into the district with some of the same repeated behaviors. So when we look at our students who have gone out and returned and still committed some of the same actions that again repeated, then having another superintendent hearing leads us to look at what our fiscal concerns are with sending students out at those prices and knowing that we have the capacity and the space because of our dwindling enrollment to house those, that program in district.
Well, you said we had, and you know, I'm going off head just to imagine what the amount of students that would go through this.
The student numbers vary.
Exactly.
So we can't say that we're going to take 37 students because again, that's a rolling enrollment in terms of students that go out, but it's not the enrollment of the students, it's the excessive cost of not only having them out, but also the issue of when those students are supposed to be receiving services, you know, I think at some of these other places when we send them out, we could offer some of those same academic issues when students come back with utilizing New Jersey Virtual School, which we presently have, and those students would be enrolled in that. The gap in terms of attendance, those students would, after the superintendent hearing, would immediately roll over into the Academic Bridge program, so we don't have additional attendance issues for those students. So there are a variety of things that we would do and offer to offset not only the cost, but the loss of instruction for the students. cost, but the loss of instruction for those students.
Would we be able to get a report document what the last three years looked like in totaling that, those activities, what we expect to do with them, what the cost analysis is? I mean, these are things that I just like to look at before I make any decision.
As far as the reporting is concerned, you look at the financial report, and that's one of the things that Mr. Hastings can provide at the next finance committee on how much money we've expended in terms of out-of-district placement just for 45-day offerings. In terms of the academic issues, we can look at those students who have been in those programs and the need for credit recovery. And so when we look at not only the gen ed students, but also the students with special needs and the supports for those students, even though they go out and completing such things as a manifestation determination review for those students, which is required once those students are out of school for more than 10 days or up to 10 days, provided home instruction if they miss five days. So there are a lot of academic reasons and rationale why we would implement this program to offset the loss of instruction, compulsory services, excuse me, compensatory services for those students, missing them, and looking at our disciplinary matrix for students in grades six through 12, who are often needing to go to 45-day placement. So this is a needed program in the district. It has been talked about for many years. Moving into us offering this program would be at a cost savings because we are already providing academic support through New Jersey Virtual School, which is through MoES. However, the cost of transportation for each student that goes out is one of the things that is draining our financial resources that we would be able to cut back on because the students would still be returning to school on a regular basis as if they are not missing school the following day after, so they would immediately report to the 45-day program.
Yeah, no, I just want analysis because we also, as that program has come up, the special ed program where we're moving students out of the district, you know, I think we're paying $72,000, this is my recollection from looking at a report almost four years ago, and when analysis of a lot of different other needs that we have, I would like to see a report on the special ed. I would like to see.
So those are two different things.
No, no.
So students who go out of district for out-of-district placement are completely different because we do not have the services to provide them for the extreme nature of what those services in the IP require. This 45-day program that we would offer to students is in lieu of students who have violated the district code of conduct, resulting in being excluded from school for 45 days. So one is a behavioral modification with services related to counseling, corrective action for the behaviors that led the students to break in the violation, violating the code of conduct, which requires us to separate them for 45 days. That is one thing. Students going out of district to out-of-district placement are completely different, so we cannot co-mingle those two things, although looking at the 45, the 45-day in an out-of-district placement.
Now, right now, I can, you know, the request is actually just to get an analysis, and I wasn't co-mingling, but I also brought up that there is another issue that we need to address, which has a higher substantial cost to some of the things that we could be bringing into service where we're not sending out somebody for $72,000 if we have 30 kids that we could actually service inside the district. So right now, I think we need to be looking at, especially under the fact that we have a cost analysis and we have a budget that is extreme, that we need to put everything down in paper, and we start needing to look at everything and how we're doing it. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking for.
Can we have a discussion in finance about that a little bit, okay?
Yeah, I just, yeah, for these issues need to be addressed. That's, that's all I'm asking.
Yep, understand. Okay. Any other questions on the agenda? Anybody? Okay. It's time for public participation in accordance with Board Policy 10167. In accordance with the policy, the Asbury Park Board Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance, provides members of public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question and answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president or presiding officer of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the presiding officer and provide his or her name, municipality resident, and group affiliation favorable. All public comments shall be directed at the presiding officer and limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting. Anybody have any public comments? Come to the mic.
And Ms. Lizinski, we do have emails, some emails from public comment.
You want to read those first, or public comment first? Go right ahead.
Thanks. Hi, Deborah Lorenz, 200 DeWitt Avenue, Asbury Park. Been here before. My son, Jason, attends eighth, seventh grade right now, will be eighth grade next year. There has been some concern of mine for nursing services over the summer. I have printed out the state law about nursing services for New Jersey schools, in case you needed to reference it. No one else can give him the medication that he needs when he eats except a nurse, unfortunately. The only person that can give him any other kind of medication in the event of emergency is glucagon. That can be given by somebody who is trained or somebody who volunteers. However, the medication that he needs the most is medication that he gets called insulin when he eats and/or when his blood sugar is too high. The state law does not cover insulin, and that is the one that worries me the most because he typically runs high rather than low, although we have seen emergency lows. So my concern obviously is that there is still only one nurse on the docket for summer school. Now, I know that her home building is the building that Jason will be in for the summer, but if she is beckoned to another building, my concern, of course, is still that she is not in the same building with Jason. That is all that I wanted to say. I don't know if you're planning on hiring a sub each day. I know that I have expressed my concern on trips, but only a trained nurse is allowed to give insulin to my son. It says so in the state law. I made more than one copy if anybody would like a copy to look at it. It is the New Jersey State Statute for Diabetics and Other Illnesses in the State of New Jersey. It's our guideline. The only other medication that can be given to a diabetic is glucagon, and that can be given by any trained individual in the state or in the school. Did you want one?
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Nina Samlin. I reside at 1101 Bangs Avenue, and I just would like, I have two comments. Actually, one of them is really a concern for me. Last night, I was invited to the Asbury Park High School, to the National Honor Society induction ceremony, and I was really hurt that a lot of the people that I see at this panel, for our board and our administrators, not one of you guys were there to show support for our children, and that bothers me to that point where we need to really start advertising in our community in regards to like special events that are happening for our kids. So we show our children that we do support them in everything that they do in this Asbury Park School District. If it was something negative, it would have been the front page of the paper. Anything positive, we don't see or hear about, and that's something that we do need to start changing to that point where we're supporting our children, let's show support and come out and advertise not only to your stakeholders, but to your board members and administrators that we should come out and show our children that we support everything that they're doing in this district, regardless of the headache that they're dealing with or you guys are dealing with when it comes to our kids. The other comment I would like to say is, I was listening to you guys discussing in regards to sending our children out of district for other issues. I just pray that if we're trying to in-house that project, that we don't turn around and create another position to pay somebody, find somebody that's in the district. If we can find somebody that's in the district, already employed, that can actually oversee that project, so we don't keep bringing additional people in our district, putting out more salaries that we don't need to spend. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Samlin. Nina, I just want to apologize. I couldn't go last night. A lot of my time has been taken up. My sister had surgery, so I've been taking care of her, so I haven't been able to attend certain things, but it looked like a wonderful event.
You have a huge community. You have tons of stakeholders. They need to know what's going on in our own district and support our children.
You're absolutely right. Thank you. Ms. York, share a comment?
Ms. Samlin, Ms. Samlin, just want to say there were two board members there. I was there and Mr. Grillo was there, and we stayed a whole while, and it was a really...
...don't help our kids. Everybody sitting here should have been here before we... I appreciate the support of the day, because you did show our children what you care about, but the rest of it should have been after we...
Thank you, Ms. Samlin.
Ma'am, no, I just want to say it was a wonderful program, and it was great to see so many ninth graders inducted into the National Honor Society, and then to witness how many of our kids are actually a part of the Honor Society. And I just want to commend the staff members and the principals, who, the principal who put that together and sent out the invitation. I think I, no sooner than I got the invitation, our RSVP, so I want to thank you for that and congratulate all the students and parents of the, the students who were inducted and all the parents of those students and teachers also.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Ron Lee Stevens. I go to Asbury Park High School. I go to Asbury Park High School, and I want to speak on an incident that happened in the gym with my, my classmate, my brother, my teammate. He was playing basketball in the gym, and our athletic director came in while he was playing basketball and asked him why he was playing basketball in crocs. He proceeds to take the basketball, and as my brother goes up to the bleachers, he tells him he needs to go back to his one-bed apartment. He tells, he starts flashing money. That is unacceptable. I feel as though he should not be in the office anymore. He should not have an office to work at. Sorry, excuse me, I'm just a little bit nervous, but it's just like, that's just, it's very unprofessional. It's just, it's not, it's not something that should be allowed. How would you feel if your, your, your son, your daughter came home one day and told, told you that a staff member said you need to go back to your one-bed apartment, and starts flashing money? But yeah, that's, that's all I got to say. I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Kelly Carlson. Sorry. I'm a resident of Brick, and I've been a phys ed and health teacher in the district for 18 years. I'm here tonight to talk about the same incident he's talking about. It happened in February. Another phys ed teacher, myself, witnessed an altercation between Mr. Bowers and a student in the gym. What we witnessed and heard that day was so crazy, insane, and just downright wrong. This is something I've never in my life seen before, especially in a school between an adult and a student. Kids come to school to feel safe, to learn, not to be bullied and harassed by the adults who work there. I left work that day. I didn't know what to do, but I knew I had to do something because it wasn't right, what happened. The next day, I sent a formal email to Principal O'Neil explaining what happened, and I filed a harassment, intimidation, and bullying form on a staff member against a student. To this day, my coworker, myself, the other students who were in the gym that day, we have never been questioned about this. Last year, we had a staff member say something inappropriate to a student. The student reported it, the staff member got suspended, an investigation took place, and the staff member was terminated. So why, why, what is the difference between the two incidents? Why was no, why was the protocol different? Why was a HIB filed, which is a legal document, and nothing was investigated? A few weeks after this incident, I got observed by Mr. Bowers. I was the first one of the phys ed teachers in the high school to get an observation by him. As I'm sure you can all guess, it was a horrible observation score. Actually, the only two PE teachers in the district to get horrible observation scores are myself and the other PE teacher who was in the gym with me the day of the incident. In fact, at my post-observation conference, it was agreed upon between Mr. Bowers and Dr. Gibson that my score would be changed. However, nothing has been changed to this day. I just want you guys to understand. It's not easy to come up here and stand up here and say these things about Mr. Bowers. He's my direct supervisor, the man who has to observe me. In my 18 years working in the district, I have never received such a horrible observation, and after tonight, I'm sure it won't be the last one because I know there's going to be retaliation, more retaliation. What happened in that gym that day was wrong. As a mom, an educator, and a person with a heart, I'm happy to stand up here and defend the kids and the students who have been affected by this man because what took place wasn't right. This is the right thing to do. If anyone ever spoke to my child the way Mr. Bowers has spoken to the students of Asbury Park, I know I would hope somebody would stand up for her. And Dr. Adams, you were my principal for two years in the middle school. We had a great rapport, I thought. I know what a proud father you are to your son. You talk about his accomplishments athletically, academically, everything. I know that if your son came home and told you that this happened, you wouldn't handle it, you wouldn't stand for it, and you sure wouldn't sit back while nothing's being done. So if you wouldn't allow this behavior to be done to your son, why are you allowing this to be done to the students of Asbury Park? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President. My name is Michael Zajak. I am the Asbury Park Education Association Vice President. I have a few words to say. Good evening, Madam President, fellow board members. I have come here tonight for a host of reasons. To start, it saddens me to learn a Mickey Mouse investigation has taken place with regards to the athletic director and his behavior towards the students of this district. When complaints are lodged against someone, especially when it deals with students, it is the obligation of the administration to do a thorough investigation and interview all parties involved and hold individuals accountable. This is the mantra of the superintendent, accountability. I guess what's good for me doesn't pertain to Dr. Adams' crony. Let me put it another way. If there's a crime scene and it's clearly foul play, but the detective and coroner are in cahoots, it gets reported as accidental. The report shown to you by this detective shows an investigation took place, but it doesn't show who was questioned or interviewed in this particular situation. If we want to be transparent and accountable, start to question the superintendent and his investigator and get to the truth. Let me share another example of the gross abuse of power by this administration. In September of this year, a secretary was suspended by the administration for her role in alleged grade, grade change scheme. In fact, the secretary never denied inputting grades that were left on her desk to be inputted. As a matter of fact, she putting, she put grades in after the forms were completed, signed by administration, and she was penalized for doing her job. In addition, because the judge and jury is only one person, you may not know the whole truth in this situation. As a matter of fact, the secretary has the forms with the administrator's signature, but yet she has had her increment withheld. This is a true, "I play favorites and protect my people." Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Hamilton. I'm a 24-year classroom teacher here in Asbury Park, and I reside at 84 Creek Road in Keansburg, New Jersey. First, I want to say Happy Haitian Flag Day, and I want to thank Shelley Sanders, one of our teachers. She put on a nice parade today where our students were able to celebrate and honor our, our Haitian students. She put on a nice parade today where our students were able to celebrate and honor our Haitian students, so I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank the board members that voted down the irresponsible and arbitrary cuts presented last week. You saw the big picture and saw how those cuts would negatively affect our kids. Ms. Morris, while I'm disappointed in your overturning of the board's vote, I do understand your role and your responsibility in this decision. However, all of this could have been avoided if we had true leadership. That one, created a working relationship with the Asbury Mayor and Council. We heard last week, all jaws dropped when we found out that this administration hasn't spoken to the mayor and council in nearly a year. How irresponsible is it not to involve the group of people that could be our financial savior? Two, we need a true leader that involves all the stakeholders in giving input and help guide some of the difficult decisions. No stakeholders were involved. Three, true leadership creates a relationship with the community. That clearly does not exist here. Now, I'm happy Dr. Rich has overturned some of the cuts. We know Dr. Howard is a tenured director and legally has bumping rights. That was a no-brainer. Security director? That's another no-brainer. Yet we're keeping a dozen, so, directors and supervisors, some tenured, some not, in a bloated central office, yet media specialists are still being abolished, the backbone of literacy. Remember, I spoke about that last week. Now, someone please explain how this is fiscally responsible to make such cuts to critical positions while maintaining a top-heavy administrative position in our central office. True leadership would have seen the big picture and made responsible cuts with all the parties involved. The current leadership here has no idea of the big picture. The current leadership sees only about control. We saw our custodian, Mike Byers, totally okay if I talk about you, Mike? Working here 20 years, demoted, we thought for other reasons, apparently demoted because of the water leak in Martin Luther King Upper Elementary School. He didn't see the water leak, and if he did see the water leak, he's not trained or doesn't have any idea how to shut off that unit that was leaking. A unit that's 60 years old and is being replaced right now. Yet he had, he was demoted after 20 years of hard service and 10 years as head custodian. It's just a coincidence that he's one of our vice presidents of the union? Hmm. In September, we saw our president of our union, Mr. Napolitani, get set up and be targeted in his classroom where he received unfavorable observations time after time again. That was only settled when an unfair labor practice was filed and that, that agreement was settled. Again, targeted another active union member. The issue over the, I'm glad to see that we're going to be using Barack Obama. I know two years ago, I stood up here and said, with Barack Obama, we should use that for the maintenance department, central office, and an alternative school. So hopefully that option is still on the table. Thank you for your time and thank you for listening.
Good evening. My name is Edley Victorin and I'm a resident of Union County and a speech-language therapist for the Asbury Park School District. I'd like to acknowledge the creation of the speech-language specialist job posted in this agenda for the upcoming school year, which honestly should have never been eliminated in the first place. With that being said, based on our current students' levels of need and the necessary changes to their IEPs, we will not be able to meet those mandates without additional support. This does not include potential incoming students who will need services next year. I'd also like to bring up to your attention some alarming items on the agenda. First, I'll start with the disappearance of the summer CST positions, since the agenda was originally posted on Monday. These include LETC, social worker, and psychologist for the summer child study team. These internal professionals typically work every summer evaluating students, managing caseloads, writing IEPs, and working with families who transfer into the district over the summer. Two of these CST members also provide Spanish and Haitian Creole translation for the CST and their families. And just like that, no one gets appointed. No one was appointed because not one CST member applied, which has never happened in the past, never. And it's not because they don't want to work to assist our families and it's not because they don't need the money. It's that they are burnt out and have been drowning in an overwhelming amount of work this school year. In addition, the majority of the CST and related service also receive poor evaluations without justification, coaching, or even an explanation during the year, when CST was down three staff members. The CST and APEA exec team have been begging for assistance for the past year. Staff and services were approved to assist with evals by you, the board, in June '22, but they weren't called until the workload became too great to bear. Working under these conditions while understaffed over the summer would further stress the staff and leave them vulnerable to more criticism, intimidation, and attack from administration, and especially when they advocate for the children and follow the special education law and code. Trust me, I know because I was one of them. Finally, I'd like to also point out the resignation of not the first, our second special education supervisor since September. Let that sink in. No, one who is responsive, collaborative, and well-respected. So if this doesn't raise a red flag for all of you, I don't know what will. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nurse Smith and I do not live in Asbury Park the type of way. Um, parents, y'all all heard the families, the teachers, the staff grieve about how foul Dr. Rashawn Adams is. You can't get no fouler than that. Asbury Park scores the lowest test scores in the state of New Jersey. True, that was before Dr. Rashawn Adams, but it's during his time here as well. Under the leadership of Dr. Rashawn Adams, the class of 2022 did not get their high school diplomas till when? November around election time, Dr. Adams? What took you so long to spell Mary on a high school diploma? You don't know how to spell doctor? Let's not forget about the football team, how they had a rough year. They didn't have enough credits. Remember that? Then all of a sudden, out the blue, credits started coming out the woodworks. Half the staff got laid off and when the Asbury Park press questioned Dr. Adams, he's so arrogant, he said, "I don't discuss personal matters with the, uh, the press." How do you not tell the press what's going on? I don't know why, when y'all was doing layoffs, you wasn't laid off first. I would have been showed you the front door. This school can't even pass basic skills. You don't know how to spell Mary on a high school diploma. The football team don't have enough credits. Why the hell are you in office? You hear everybody complain? Get them out of here. They don't need to be here. Fire the whole damn board. And start all over. Start with somebody who don't know how to spell Mary. Get them out. Moron. I don't need to clap my clap for myself. We Asbury Park friends. Don't touch that foul here.
Good evening, Madam President. My name is Stephanie Kelly and I am a resident of Brick, New Jersey. I've had the privilege of working with our special education population for 20 years. I also was appointed as the Asbury Park Education Association Grievance Chairperson. I am here this evening to reiterate that I have filed over 40 grievances since our previous chairperson retired less than two years ago. I consulted with her when I took over her position in the APEA. I inquired about the grievance process. She shared that in her five-year term as grievance chair, she had fewer than five grievances go before the Board of Education or to arbitration. She stated that this was due to the collaboration the association had with principals, supervisors, and superintendents. The grievances I have filed are violations of board policies, our collective bargaining agreement, specifically the discipline without just cause provision, and the law specifically that the regulations have achieved New Jersey on teacher evaluations. I submitted over 40 grievances, and that may just be a number to you, but it tells that our staff believe they have been wronged by this administration. I would like to explain what has transpired with these grievances. With the help of the Board of Education members, five grievances have been sustained. We have settled 17 grievances with the assistance of the county superintendent and the state monitor. And five went to arbitration and were settled. We are currently waiting to settle four more, otherwise they will be going through the costly arbitration process. And as of this week, I sent four grievances and with about 10 more to follow. The bottom line I need everyone to know is that no matter how many grievances I file, they are being denied without any discussion. There is no collaboration to solve problems with this administration without the pressure of outside sources. The APEA leadership represents our members and we cannot continue to be disrespected in our workplace. Please hear my plea. If there was someone in the top leadership role of our district willing to work collaboratively instead of combatively with our staff, the future would be much brighter for all of us. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Spiegel. I'm a former Asbury Park teacher. And I have some real concerns about the special ed program and what's going on. I no longer work in the district and yet I get, I get phone calls from parents. One student was out of school for four months. There was no home instruction. There was no alternative placement. There was no change of classes. Four months, and we wonder why our scores are the way they are. Another student was out of school for a month and a half. The mother got a phone call saying that they'd like to place her daughter out of, out of district, but there wasn't any money for it. But you found the money soon enough when I made some phone calls. I'd like to know why there are inclusion classes with no in-class support. The law says if you have an IEP, you must have in-class support. Where's, where's the in-class support? You have money for administrators, you're fat at the top, but you can't get an aide in a classroom for students who need legally that support? Shocking. Also, there's a social worker who has an immunocompromised disease. It's not going to get better. It never will. And yet she can't even park in a handicapped parking space. Those trailers are still sitting out there. But she can't park, but you're going to hold her accountable for being late? She shows up some days when she can't even get out of bed, but she's here and she stays late. I know because I driven her home when I used to work here. I dodged that bullet, though. I'd also like to know... Oh, I'm sorry. I would like to address something that you brought up, the 45-day program. Dr. Adams, you were a champion at antagonizing kids to the point where you got them so aggravated, they came back at you over hoods, over wearing a hoodie. But they ended up in 45 days in a program that just encouraged them to misbehave, and that's where they got stuck. We had an alternative program. Your superintendent, who brought you in, Dr. Adams, is the one who demolished it. We saved this district millions of dollars. We had repores with those children. I actually had one of the students show up at my house for Easter. But you talk about, "We have no money"? We've got an empty building.
Please direct your comments to me, okay? The presiding officer.
Okay, well, he can hear me when I'm directing it to you.
Certainly can, yes.
Okay. So I'll look at you, but I'll tell you what's going on. The alternative school worked. Check it out. My name is Lisa Spiegel. You can ask me about it. I'd be happy to share.
Thank you.
Felicia Simmons, Sule Avenue, Asbury Park. I'm here to speak a couple of things and I'm going to be rare and say it's not Dr. Adams, right? It's not the solution. There's two people, two entities that I want to speak at and we talk about why we're here today, and it's the board and the state monitor, right? Board, when they talk about cuts, which the cuts were wrong and he couldn't imagine the way our dynamic is, it's the board's policy, and I told you, Doctor, that the most important part of it is policy. You can draft a policy saying that you cut from the top down instead of the bottom up, right? So you can directly make policy that, so this won't happen again, right? And that should be the first. And then state monitor. I'm, I'm glad that we're talking about the 45-day and the alternative school because when it was abolished, it wasn't necessarily Dr. Rappellette that co-signed it. It was the state that came in and said it was, and they had no good reason to abolish it. It did save millions. We spoke about alternatives. We talked about, I specifically, remember, I have one of those memories, that when we talked about kids who strolled in at 10 o'clock, because alternative school was one of my schools as a board member, that strolled in at 10 o'clock, but they came. Those same kids, when they get shipped out, right, they won't come. They'll disappear. When I spoke about when we hired Dr. Rappellette, how inside his school in Carteret, they had a really deep alternative in program where they taught life skills, right? The separateness of the special needs and other things. And how we could be a sender district because we had a couple of children that came from Neptune to go to alternative school. And how it made peace in the high school. There was no fights because the gang leaders were in an alternative school where they kept and did their work. And the high school was peaceful and the mainstream students can do it. When I talk about that this issue is a long-stemmed issue, that we, these are policies and things that were spoke about at the time, but yet they were done anyway. This district was gutted. This is a systematic plan. And y'all board members, that's why I'm looking at you, y'all have a responsibility to unravel it, right? Y'all have the unique, special opportunity to make a plan that we can keep this district going. Because I'm telling you, it is a long-seated plan to unravel and disband this district and it's assisted top-down, right? It's assisted where they put people here sucking up our resources for no reason. They're just in the board office and they were placed here by the state. They were just, they're, they're entities. We had a KAF, we had millions in, 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 inside accounts, but yet now they are all empty. There is a plan and the person who's supposed to be checking it is not. So it's up to you to check it and make sure that you roll it out. I know y'all can do it. I know you all, right? I know you all care, right? Because the other side is, is playing against you, right? And coming back years later, saying things that they knew at the time, right, they didn't value. And third, you need the community, right? You need the community and the teachers because there's no other way you can do it. And we're willing to sit here and help, right? Don't, don't push us out, Dr. Adams. We, we're really, truly here. We can see the full picture. There's plenty of us who do.
Thank you, Ms. Sammellon.
Good evening, Madam President. I'm John Napolitani, President of the Asbury Park Education Association. I reside in the town of devotion, but my roots are here as my parents were born and raised in Asbury Park. Tonight is a very somber one for the APEA and the members that we represent. We took a vote of no confidence in Superintendent Dr. Rashawn Adams this week. A vast majority, over 90% of the membership, voted no confidence in the leadership of Dr. Adams. We understand the severity of this decision and did not arrive at it hastily. The following are the reasons for this vote. A hostile work environment. Members are issued increment withholdings and letters of reprimand without discussion of the infraction causing those actions. Lack of collaboration. Stephanie Kelly, the APEA grievance chair, already discussed the close to 50 grievances that we have filed since Dr. Adams became the district leader. He will tell you that they're frivolous. They're far from frivolous. Yet any other superintendent would be concerned that there's a problem here in the Asbury Park school system. Lack of adherence to the procedures and laws, particularly when evaluating staff members. Violations of Board of Education policies on evaluation and student discipline. Consistent violation of the APEA negotiated contract, specifically in the discipline of staff without the just cause provision. Retaliation towards staff members, including those who advocate for the rights and the safety of students and staff. I'm sure it's coming tomorrow. Elimination of critical positions that impact students directly. Lack of investigations in matters related to the harassment, intimidation, and bullying, which are HIB claims, towards staff and students. This association leadership has worked consistently and collaboratively with the former two predecessor superintendents, Dr. Rappellette and Dr. Gray. superintendents, Dr. Rappellette and Dr. Gray. The relationship was so collaborative back then with Dr. Rappellette, that the governor's office called me, John Napolitani, the president of a teachers' union, for a recommendation for him to become the commissioner of education. That's how good the collaboration was back then. Not only was there collaboration, but there was also a mutual respect for each other's positions and the general care and welfare of this school district. Our members had a fear of retaliation, do not want this petition handed to any of you tonight. They do not want their names in front of you. We will let the county executive superintendent review my results with all the signatures for their validity. The fact that we cannot share the names with the board is even more disheartening, that we, as staff, can't trust the process to protect our members. You are our elected officials. You care deeply about these kids in the city of Asbury Park. We care deeply about these kids. We come to work every day, we care about these students that we teach each and every day. We come to tell you that we don't have the confidence in the leadership of Dr. Rashawn Adams anymore, and this district needs to make a change. We're here to educate the students of Asbury Park, and this is sincerely hindering that process. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Wayne Autry, and I live in Millstone, New Jersey. I'm a member of Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity, and I'm in the chapter called Zeta Epsilon Lambda, right here in Monmouth in Ocean County. I, what our organization do, we provide, we help develop leaders, promote brotherhood and academic excellence by providing service and advocacy for our community. And in fulfilling that mission, through the introduction of Ms. Ricks, we were introduced to Dr. Ruiz and Dr. Adams, and they allowed us as an organization to come into this community and provide academic enrichment services and mentoring opportunities to the young people, both at the Thurgood Marshall Elementary School, as well as the Asbury Park High School. What we're doing in the Asbury Park High School is we're offering SAT programs to the juniors in the Dream Academy, and we've also had the opportunity to work with the Allied Health Academy, where we've brought professionals from Roman Isiopatic Medicines Medical School, we've brought professionals from Rutgers University, and we've brought medical professionals from the University of New England Isiopatic Medical School. And these, what they brought was diagnostic teaching, and they brought tutoring services to provide the young people the ability to pass their state exams. Now, why I'm here tonight is to ask that we have an opportunity to continue in the opportunities that we've been providing to the young people in the school by having a more robust academic enrichment programs with these young people. And of course, it'll be free of cost to the Asbury Park School District. We are picking up the tab as an organization for all the professionals that we provide services for these young people, because we believe that these young people deserve an opportunity, and we were here to help facilitate those opportunities. I myself came from a public school, it was in Harlem, I'm the product of it, I wanted to go into New York University Law School, and I've been a lawyer for over 30 years. And I came out of a school just like the schools that these young people are attending, with all the challenges that they're facing every day, and I managed to get out. And that's why we're here, we're here to provide those same opportunities for your young people. We like the board to support us and to help us with that opportunity, and we like the administration to cooperate with us in providing those opportunities. So once again, my name is Wayne Autry, and I'm a member of Zeta Epsilon Lambda, Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity, right here in Monmouth County. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing there's no one else, I'll close the public...
The board is, got to look at everybody here. See, y'all get this, y'all understand this. Anthony Remy, Comstock Street, Asbury Park, New Jersey. First of all, Happy H-Plaid Day. I wrote a few things down, just so y'all know, I mean, it's a lot going on. But, number one, children first. The priority here should be the children first. That's the priority. All this back and forth, he says, she says, this and that, it's embarrassing. It's very embarrassing. Like, this really needs to change. Like, we're, I feel as though we're playing, we're all playing into agendas. I used to sit on this side, I was on this side, now I'm on this side. So now, I get all the information. So I really see what's going on, I got the facts, I got facts, I got facts. When I say I got facts, I got facts. So, a lot of things that happened should not be happening. A lot of things that's been going on for years, I mean, and now that everyone's being held accountable, now things are starting to come to the light, you feel me? I'm not politically, I'm not a political correct person. I don't care about ethic charges. I don't have no political gains, I'm not taking no envelope with the money shaking hands, giving anybody promises, you feel me? I'm here for the kids. By the grace of God, the people here in Asbury Park elected me to be a representative for the ones that look like me coming after me, you feel me? And I'm here to provide an opportunity. All this back and forth that we're doing, all these blogs, giving things to charter schools, bigging them up, all that, we're gonna lose Asbury. I don't know if y'all see this for real, I don't know if y'all see this for real. Like, we're gonna lose this place. Our families already moving out because they can't afford it. Now you've got students moving because all this, all this that's going on, like, we're gonna lose this place. I'm telling you, I'm telling you, y'all may not see it, y'all talk about bigger picture, y'all talk about, what y'all talking about? Y'all talking about bigger pictures, y'all talking about systems, y'all talking about all this, yo, yo. If we not coming together for the children, then you, don't say nothing. Stop coming up here complaining. You not coming up here with a solution, don't say nothing at all. Know what I mean? And like I said, now I got facts. Like, like I said, I don't care about ethic charges.
Anthony?
Man, I don't care about ethic charges.
Anthony, Mike, no, no, no.
I don't care. I got real charges out here, so it is what it is. So yeah, this whole, if y'all work anywhere else, all right, I'm gonna give y'all an example. Like I said, I got facts. So y'all worked anywhere else, y'all come, y'all come to work, let's say 56 unexcused absences, 153 late, y'all think y'all still have a job? Y'all think, no, I mean, y'all here for the children, right? All this bullying, that, know what I mean, that you're doing, time's up, I'm here, time, all this bullying, this whole, know what I mean, this aggressive attitude, making hostile environments, like, what y'all think gonna happen? You know people gonna rebel when they don't like what's going on, and at the same time, y'all gotta do what y'all gotta do too. You feel me? Y'all got a real responsibility, y'all got children that y'all responsible for, every [bleep].
Mr. Remy, your three minutes are up.
Barbara, relax. Barbara, relax. Man, yo, yo, I am, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, I'm standing up here, because I see what's going on, I'm telling you, we're gonna lose this place. I live here, like I said, Comstock Street, I'm a Comstock baby. I'm a Comstock baby. Like, yo, we gonna lose this place. I don't know if y'all, if y'all live here, you look to your left, your right, yo, it's a different Asbury. And the way we move is gonna be a more different Asbury, we won't lose this. This is not gonna be, no, we're not gonna have no Bradley, Bradley Elementary, this gonna be a charter, a private, and then it's gonna be kids that y'all don't even recognize, if there even is kids here. Like, yo, y'all gotta change, y'all, we grown as, come on, I'm out.
So, I just wanna piggyback off of what Remy said. I used to, my name is Angela Alvez Anderson, and I'm at 405 First Avenue. And my concern is this, I served on this board for 10 years, and during those 10 years, one of the problems that I had was our kids weren't able to read and write on grade level. And I mentored some of our kids here, and our kids are really intelligent, they're smart. But when a teacher is enthusiastic about teaching, then a child is enthusiastic about learning. When I sat here, there were things that I couldn't say when you came up to the podium and you spoke, and you, you know, talked about this and that, and it was always about you. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves if you call yourself a teacher and the kids are not able to read on grade level. If you love what you're doing, then you make sure you take that love and you turn that in so that the children are learning. Now that's not to say that that's all of you. Years ago, I said that there are teachers who are earning their paychecks, and other ones were being gifted, and that those that were being gifted needed to be held accountable. Because if you went somewhere else and came in late, or there was 97 of you who don't show up a month, you wouldn't have a job. And some days, when you were supposed to have been working, I saw you at the spas, I saw you at the gym, I saw you vacationing. I would do a tour and come into the buildings, and the kids were playing ball while the teacher was on her phone, Facebooking and having whatever time. So don't tell me about you love your education. This man has come here to hold you accountable, okay? And you don't like it, because for 40 years, this district has been dwindling down. I couldn't even send my kids to this school. I couldn't send them here, I put them here and they wasn't learning because of the teachers that were here. Not all of you, but some of you. And I know you're not gonna like what I'm saying, I really don't care.
Maureen?
I really don't care, Maureen, because you was one of the main ones that was causing problems up in here, okay? So there you go. So now you gonna come back here after you retired and say what you need to say. Well, you should have been concerned about the children.
We're gonna recess for 10 minutes and we'll be back.
You should have been concerned about the children. And that's what you all should be concerned about, the children. Thank you.
We'll take a 10-minute recess, we'll take a 10-minute recess.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to go in executive session?
I'll move it.
Move it.
Have a second?
Second.
We'll be in executive session to discuss client privilege, client attorney privilege, personnel, litigation, and we'll be back out hopefully within 35, 40 minutes.
I'm just gonna read for the public, I'm gonna read the motion. It's whereas the Open Publics Meetings Act allows for the, allows for the exclusion from discussion of the public portion of a meeting of certain matters as outlined below, and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters made and will be made, such discussion public when a proper conclusion has been reached. Now therefore, the Asbury Park Board of Education is retired to executive session for approximately 45 minutes to discuss the matters that were addressed by the presiding officer, and will return to this room at the conclusion of the executive session. Thank you.
Back into public. Mr. Hastings, roll call, please. Gentlemen.
Mr. Grillo?
I'm here.
Ms. Lizinski?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Mister Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Before we go to the superintendent's agenda, I wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We did hear you, we listened to your concerns, and we're looking forward to collaborating and reaching out to the community and all parties involved. Dr. Adams, your...
Can we do the minutes before we do the...
I'm sorry, the minutes, yes.
Could I have a motion for A2? A motion on page A2, item 12, A, B, and C.
I'll second it.
Moved by Ms. Ricks, seconded by Ms. Lizinski. Any questions, comments? This is A2, item 12, A, B, and C. Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Remy? Mister Rogers?
Yes.
Mister Saunders? Thank you.
Dr. Adams, your agenda?
Mister Rogers, microphone. Prior to have Dr. Christie Howard Morris do the HIV report?
Good evening. We have one allegation of HIV at the upper elementary school, and it was an incident of a allegation of a verbal and physical HIV. It was investigated, and the HIV was unfounded. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Howard Morris. I'd like for a consent agenda on all items, B1 through B... B8, 1 through 26.
I actually had a question on one of the...
Do we have a motion?
I have a mo, yeah.
Move it.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Questions?
Yes, and I apologize, I wanted to ask this in the previous hour, but the therapy session was going on. The B7, B7, number 20, I may have missed this, because I came in late, and again, my apologies. But I'm trying to figure out where, does it say where the location of the 45-day program? Have we figured that out yet?
Right now, we're looking at spacing. Right now, we've been looking at what will work best in terms of the time. That will be something that we will provide next month, but right now, it is the approval of the program, the particular details on, that will be predicated on spacing and scheduling.
Okay. I mean, my concern is just that we're talking about kids that have had disciplinary problems and have had a lot of issues going on that we don't get into a situation where they're put into one of the schools that, where it could be dangerous for the other kids in the, in the school. So, just to keep that in mind, so.
Thank you very much. We'll keep that into consideration, and that's one of the things that we're working with on that, that's extensively part of the planning.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we...
We have a motion and a second, questions only.
Oh, question. Well, the question is, can we get, like I asked for it, full analysis for like, for the last three years of how many kids, what the cost analysis were?
I thought we would, I thought we went through that during the regular meeting beforehand, so that'll happen, that'll happen, sure.
That will be discussed in the CNI committee report, that, those, that data and information.
We can actually have it in finance too, some of that information. Mister Rogers, okay?
I did have a, one last thing I wanted to say about B, B6, number 17. This is a positive thing, it's not really a question. I just wanted to commend the administration for approving the curriculum, well, hopefully we'll vote on this and approve it, the creation of curriculum areas in so many arts areas, everything from rock history and jazz history to arts, visual and performing arts, choir, vocal workshop, journalism, I mean, this is the kind of stuff that, I mean, look, as a parent, now I'm speaking as a parent, I'm excited because my daughter, because she has an IEP, sometimes in terms of communicating, art is her language. This is stuff that really is, is needed. We're Asbury Park, we're known for the arts, we're known for music, and it's great to see this, this step into writing curriculum that is befitting a city like Asbury Park.
Thank you, and just want to recognize that we have two of our outstanding teachers of music in...
that is befitting a city like Asbury Park.
Thank you. And just want to recognize that we have two of our outstanding teachers of music in the back who service both of our students, so their work is not going unnoticed. Their work is not going unnoticed. Ms. Peterson was one of my, was my music teacher at the middle school and did an outstanding job always, and, you know, we also have our great music taking place at Third Good Marshall, and your name is escaping me right now, so blame my mind, not my heart. Ms. Schwartz. Yes, Ms. Schwartz. Yeah, and she's a tennis lover, so, yes, thank you. All right? So thank you, Ms. Schwartz. All right?
Next is going to be marching band, right?
I have a roll call, Mr. Hastings, please.
All items, B1 through B8.
We can't make a motion?
Not while this motion is in place.
You can only make a motion to table.
Yes.
You want to...
I wanted to table B...
You have to first or second make a motion. It has to first or second.
I'd like to make a motion to table, B7, number 20, and B...
The only motion to table would be only the motion that was made.
For...
The entire agenda.
The entire agenda.
Yeah, otherwise, you can't make a motion to table on items, because we have a motion on the floor.
It's a pending motion right now. Oh, so I would have to vote down the motion to reconsider it?
It would have to fail. The motion to approve the agenda would have to fail. Roll call, Mr. Hastings.
Thank you. All items, B1 through B8, 1 through 26. Mr. Grillo? Thank you. Ms. Ricks?
Yes, on everything, abstaining from B1, item number 2A.
Thank you. Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Everything except for B...
Everything except B7, 20.
Yeah, 20, and... And B24.
So yes, everything, no on 20 and 24.
B, yeah, B8, 24.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders? I'm sorry, microphone, please.
Everything except B7, 20, no. That was same for me as well.
That's the in-school 45-day program?
Yeah.
Your voting, no?
Thank you. All items pass.
How did it pass?
Passes the majority of the present. It's not a personal matter.
It passed because just the majority of the...
Oh, okay.
Mr. Hastings, your agenda?
Motion for all items, C1, number 1, through C6, number 2.
I'll make it.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Ricks. Questions or comments?
Any questions on Mr. Hastings' agenda? Roll call, please.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes, except anything to do with New Jersey American Water or Giuseppe Grillo.
Thank you. Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Remy? Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? All items carry. Thank you.
I have a motion to close the meeting?
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?